Hi, uh, welcome to the New Voting Project. My name is Canol. Your host, you're welcome. First time anybody's ever said that. Uh, and today we are very pleased to have a special guest, a friend from the Bay Area, James Aguilar. And then you're quite an impressive person, I might add. Uh, you're the current acting president of the San Leandro School Board Association, a director for the California School Boards Association. You're also a student, you're completing your senior year at San Francisco State here in the Bay Area. And you're chief justice of, of the Associated Students there, the Student Government. Um, and you're a senior director at the San Leandro 2050 Organization. And, uh, you're director at the SF Foundation, uh, SF State Foundation. So thank you so much for coming out, my friend. I understand you're very busy. But, uh, but I do appreciate it.
Of course. No, I'm super excited to be here and I, you know, I don't know how I balance it all, but it works out anyways. Nothing to stress out about.
That's, that's what I like to hear. Uh, and this is no stress environment. Uh, so that's great. Uh, so yeah, let's get into these questions. Um, first one, pretty standard, you know, tell us about your background. You know, how you got into education policy, why that's the forefront of the, of this discussion? Um, and then, you know, describe your, your college experience a little bit. I understand you're pretty active on campus. Uh, so yeah, kind of just, just tell me everything about your life and do it reasonably.
Totally. Um, so I was born in Berkeley and I was raised in Oakland. So I, I lived in Oakland's Diamond District, right on Diamond Avenue, next to Diamond Park. Um, and I was raised by two union parents. Uh, my mom worked at Safeway, my dad also worked at Safeway, that's where they met. Um, and you know, they were on their union organizing committee, uh, USCW Local Five, shout out to them. Um, and yeah, I mean, that's just my family environment and I, I went to Oakland Public Schools. I went to Glendale Elementary School, which was just right around the corner. Uh, and then I went to Edinburgh Middle School, which was just over the hill. Um, and really that's where it all started for me, at least in the forming of who I am today. Um, I always say that I was raised by educators, specifically women educators. I spent most of my time at school, I spent most of my time gravitating toward adults. Um, that's just how it was. And so I was always connected with my teachers. I, I felt, you know, um, more connected with them than I did with my peers, which was an interesting difference between, um, a, a lot of people within the school. But just always how it was. And that's what I guess people call me an old soul for is because I um, always gravitated toward adults and I just wanted to learn from them and really soak in everything. Um, but yeah, no, raised by women educators basically throughout my elementary and middle school, um, time in Oakland. And then, so here's what happened. Um, we moved to San Leandro for a number of reasons. One, we wanted a new beginning, but two, really, we were living with a landlord who just didn't care that my mom was beginning to experience health issues uh, due to black mold in our apartment that he would not take care of. Um, and he didn't give us any leeway or room for the fact that we were low income and we were struggling to make it. Um, and so at, at that time, we said, we're coming, you know, we're coming on down to San Leandro where we believe that we can start a new beginning. And we arrived here about nine years ago, I would say. Um, and
You're a pretty young guy. To make clear, yeah, you're pretty young, nine years ago. That's not that long ago.
I know. It, it, yeah, it doesn't seem like long ago. It seems like yesterday, but, um, yeah. And, and nine years ago, um, and that's where I started to go to school at San Lorenzo High School. Um, that literally my experience at San Lorenzo High changed everything. Uh, San Lorenzo High is why I started to get into politics. Um, I, I, my freshman year, I think, is when I started going to city council meetings. Honestly, just because I, I, my brain gravitated toward it. I was kind of interested. I was like, why not? Why not learn a little something, meet some people along the way? And I, I ended up meeting council members, I ended up meeting the mayor. Uh, and they all sort of began to mentor me and say, look, if you want to get involved, if you want to make a change in the community, then let's get you to do it. Um, and then I started working with community organizations and many different groups to start to do work in youth rights and, and youth engagement. And then I, I, I took that experience and I translated it to student leadership. So in my sophomore year of high school, I became the ASB secretary. And then I ultimately moved up ASB Vice President, ASB President. Um, and that's just a whole experience that I, I, I I accredit my whole shift of personality, my whole being of who I am today to high school leadership. Um, because of the many people I was surrounded by. Uh, and I took that experience by, of course, as every eighteen year old does. In 2018, I ran for school board, literally, right? I was, as I was walking the stage for graduation. Um, and I got the seat. And from there, I had this entire paradigm shift of moving from, you know, ASB leadership to thi- this, you know, adult role, thi- this leadership role that, um, not often people my age or, um, not often even, you know, being a Latino, being openly gay, not many, you know, of those groups get that opportunity. And so I found myself, um, not overwhelmed, but just flabbergasted. I was like, whoa, this, this is crazy. I'm here. Um, and really the reason that I ended up running for public office, running for school board, um, was because in 2016, when I was in high school, I, you know, was in the thick of it with the 2016 election. Everybody was talking about it. Um, it, it affected just the environment of our campus. And so ultimately, when President Trump was elected, I, you know, I, I just was not having it. I, I, I did not want people like him to be in charge of our political leadership. We, we need people who are conversational, who are not aggressive. We do not need, uh, the kind of authoritarian and frankly, um, racist leadership that the President Trump, um, you know, uh, gave throughout the years of being president after he was elected. And it just created this whole shift in American society. Um, and what better place than to get people to realize that that shift was taking place than in education? Starting from pre-K to twelve, um, getting individuals engaged and involved and really, um, you know, pushing them to shift their minds to think about society and the world in relation to them. Um, learning about equity, learning about leadership and governance, but with kindness and with, um, ultimately a look back at history. Because so what on history for some people? Um, some people just care about power, ego and ability to move up the ladder. That's not what I want our students to be prepared to do when they leave high school. I want them to be change makers. Um, but
Imagine you took that same passion to San Francisco State, right?
Oh yeah, and that's where I was getting at. Um, yeah, uh, SF State, actually, let me back up. I, I, I did go to SF State. Um, because of the fact that they were the only university that accepted me within a week of applying. Um, and outside of that, they just seemed excited. They, they seemed open and they wanted people, you know, with diverse backgrounds to come into their university, whereas the other places I applied, I got rejected from. So it was like, well, SF State, here I come. Um, but my first year at SF State, I did not get involved at all. I think I promised myself, you know, I'm gonna stay out of this. I'm gonna stay out of the whole student government thing. I did it in high school. Um, but I ended up doing it because of my best friend Joshua. Um, I almost ran for a position on the Board of Directors for Associated Students called the, um, Liberal Creative Arts Representative, um, Liberal and Creative Arts Representative, representing the LCA College. Um, but I backed down because I, I just wasn't interested at the time. But Joshua said, what are you doing, James? Why, why did you back down from it? You know? You know, uh, it's funny, he said that because he was running for the position too. Um, but I was like, I just, I'm not ready. I, I, I need to give it a break and I need to think about it. And then it came to me, I think in my, you know, the latter of my sophomore year and into my junior year, I thought, yeah, there, why not? Why not do it? Because there was a lot of opportunity for growth within Associated Students, within the student body. And so ultimately I was appointed as the Director of Government Community Relations, where I was able to get in there and help Associated Students build relationships with, you know, San Francisco supervisors, with assembly members and senators through the region, so that we can begin to build ourselves as an entity uh, and make sure that we are the best advocates that we can be for our student body.
Shout out Matt Haney.
Yeah, shout out to Matt Haney. Matt Haney is a good friend. Um, and he's definitely an ally of SF State and we've really appreciated his, his leadership. Um, but yeah, I, I, I just, I got in at the right time. I, I knew I was ready when I was ready. Um, but outside of that, I feel like my classes, the, the classes that I was taking, the professors that I knew really prepared me to be ready for that. And ultimately through these four years of going to college at SF State, they've prepared me to be a better elected official, be a better person. And so I attribute my college experience to, um, who I am politically and who I am just as a person today. Um, i- it's all growth, right? I know I've said that before, uh, with transitioning to high school to college, into my first year as a trustee. I said that about elementary, transitioning over to middle and then into high school. Because it's all evolution, it's all a transition and you learn step by step.
Yeah, that was a, that was a pretty reasonable answer, I might add. Uh, no, no, that's, that's wonderful to hear. I'm very glad that, that the, the system that you personally experienced is a system you're willing to, to get in the, in the weeds and, and try to, to build an equitable process. I think that's, that's kind of the point I, I want to make, uh, this time around. Um, and, and I guess, well, you're on the school board, you're, you're now the acting president, pretty recent accomplishment. Um, what are, what are the primary policies? What are the things you're seeing? Uh, the, the lack of resources, the infrastructure that needs to be built, not only in San Leandro, but also since you're director in the California School Boards Association throughout the state?
Yeah, it's a good question. And I, I think I would split the two because, um, starting with the school board level, we're working on a whole range of things, or at least, um, we were, we were going full force and then COVID happened. And I think we've been, you know, i- in the middle of reimagining what, um, health and safety looks like in our schools. Um, so as a policy and a- as decision makers, really, we've been focused on what that looks like. Uh, on what protecting our students, what protecting our teachers and staff looks like amid a global pandemic. I mean, the first in a hundred years, right? Um, we had no idea it was coming. So, um, navigating that and just being at the forefront of all of that is really what our focus is right now. But in addition to that, looking at, uh, at least in, in my personal worldview, um, I, I've always advocated for pushing the school district, pushing school districts really, to go beyond just education policy and move toward, you know, advocating for things like crime is climate crisis mitigation strategies, uh, moving toward advocating for, um, you know, healthcare and these, all of these different global things that ultimately affect our students or will affect our students in the future as they leave our schools and become productive individuals in society. Um, I, I, I just think that three sixty worldview is just so important and helps us inform all of the individual things that we're doing on the board. Um, and then i- in regards to being on the board at the California School Boards Association, um, that's been a whole different perspective in and of itself because now we're looking at a statewide lens. What are the issues with the state of California, public funding? Uh, California is the thirty-eighth in the nation for per people spending, whereas
That's, oh, that's, that's, yeah, that's incredible.
Whereas we're number one in per prisoner spending. Now, someone is, someone on Twitter once told me, um, well, you try and cut down the cost of having a prisoner, you know, i- incarcerated. And I, I, at first I didn't know how to respond, but what's the root cause to that? Education, right? It, it starts at the surface level. And when you address the issues in education and provide the environment that people need to grow and evolve, that's when it'll stem out to syste- to systemic change really. Because then you'll get people in power that understand the society, uh, and, uh, have a whole different worldview, uh, than a system that has oppressed them for years. Um, education is just the level where everything starts at. But nonetheless, advocating, um, definitely school funding being one of them. I think my biggest passion, full and fair funding for public schools. Um, but also just generally in education policy, what discipline looks like throughout the state and how we can work toward restorative justice practices, um, as a state. What we can do as a state to get our teachers the fair wages that they deserve. Um, because, I mean, let's be honest, none of our school districts pay our teachers fairly and what they deserve. And that is a consequence of the state, you know, a- acting in a political nature. Sure, they are political, but we're talking about people's lives and ultimately students and families' lives affected. And so i- i- it just, it's all three sixty, like I said. Um, and there's just, there's much more going on in education right now.
I believe you.
So, yeah, that's just, there was just a couple of things there.
The look on your face, I think, um, codifies the thought that education needs to be reformed. Um, and I distinctly remember, say, twenty seventeen, um, uh, in middle school, public middle school, um, my teachers went on strike. This is, this is the year that Trump was, uh, assumed office. Presidency, so things are already volatile. And the teachers went on strike and, you know, I couldn't get my homework checked after school. I couldn't go to them for help. They wouldn't, they wouldn't really respond to emails after hours. And those are, you know, basics, but, but those are valuable. I- in the, in the long term, relying on those relationships. So, and that was one of the reasons I became active, right? Is, is that kind of, you know, what's going on? What, like you said, what is the root cause of, of, of these issues? What is the reasoning and how can we come to a, a comparable kind of compromise? Is, is where can we meet in the middle? Um, and, and in some cases, we don't meet in the middle. Not, but that's what needs to be done. Uh, so, so no, I, I, I completely concur and I, and I agree on the most part that, that education should be at the forefront of many discussions. That's why you and I have friends like Delane Easton, you know, former state superintendent who's been on the show and who talks about the fact that education was never at the discussion until somebody like her came into the field of view. And, and I'm, I'm seeing a lot of similarities. So, so I'm proud of the work that you're doing, man. I'm proud of it. Uh, and I thank you for, for the service. Um, but the essence of this channel is to talk about voting rights. Um, and surprisingly enough, there is an educational component to vote in some cases. Um, you know, I often ask colleagues, peers, they'll be like, yeah, voting's really important, but how do you actually vote? And what is the logistical process? You know, what do I need to fill out? Where do I need to go? Do, how do I need to be of a certain age? Uh, and those are just questions, I think. Civic engagement curriculum. How, what are your thoughts on something like that being implemented? If it were me, I'd make it, uh, you know, I'd make it, I'd mandate it. That people need to learn how to vote, more than just your average history or civics class, right? Where you just talk about the importance and the historical background, which I, which is completely necessary. It's a foundation. But the process of voting, you know, I would want every student to, to have access to become a poll worker or incentivized, encouraged, even if it was possible, allowed to, to have an off day to go work as a poll worker. Right? These, these are all ideas, even lowering the voting age. I mean, what are your thoughts as, as an educator, as somebody who, who, who deals with these, this and ultimately wants the same policy? How, how can we do this in California or in the Bay Area?
Yeah, I, I think i- it's ridiculous being one of the greatest states in this country. And I, I say that proudly because I, I love California and I, I, I love, you know, representing constituents in just, just such a vibrant and diverse and beautiful state. Um, but we, we should have gotten on top of civic education a long time ago. And only until after Common Core standards were developed for the nation did California really start to jump on civics education. And we're talking about only a decade, less than a decade ago, that these things have started to become in motion. Um, and i- it's a pivotal time for politics, you know, arguably, uh, even before, uh, the Trump presidency, i- i- it's, it's just things have been changing and shifting and evolving so fast. Because I believe technology, right, uh, social media and communications, things are rapid and fast now. Um, and I think we should have adapted earlier. Um, but with that being said, I, I, I think a lot of the barriers to voting are what are going to, um, ultimately get people, um, uh, uh, removing the barriers, I should say, to voting are ultimately burning, what are going to get people to, you know, fill in their dots, are going to get people to cross those lines. Um, and that means access to the internet, of course. I mean, we have a number of bills in the state legislature right now that involve broadband, broadband for all, Senator Lena Gonzalez. Um, and so much more that I hope pass because that will open significantly, um, the ability and access for people to vote. Um, and, and what I mean by that is they'll be able to register, they'll be able to find their polling place, they'll be able to schedule a lift, right? Because lift is free on voting days, which is awesome. Um, and be able to get them to the polls. But then that's the other issue is getting people to the polls, getting people to the ability to vote. Um, at least in polling places. I can talk about mail-in voting in a second. Um, but transportation, right? We need to significantly expand transit systems. Uh, a- and really, I, uh, there is no specific science to transit because it's constantly evolving as well. Um, but transit is that cornerstone that's going to get people to the polls and get people to the classroom. Uh, it's going to get people to work. It's going to get people to wherever they need to go. Uh, and that is all important in voting and getting people civically engaged to learn about candidates, to learn about the process, getting them there. Um, but then back to that education piece, right? Um, it's not necessarily just about people getting to the information. It's about the information itself. Is it understandable? Is the data readable? Uh, uh, I, I, I often come across things and I, I've been an advocate for data accessibility for years now. Um, I, I've seen things that are just so complicated, uh, and so nuanced that it prevents the individual, uh, whatever it is, voting or making a decision, from making a decision or from taking action or, you know, engaging, being active because of that, of that data inaccessibility that they face. They, they look at the information and it's just too much to digest. And so I think it's up to the people really who are, uh, implementing and getting information on the web, all of that, to start to look at, well, how do we get people to understand, um, what these things are? And that just means making it simple, making it easy to read, making it accessible, opening, um, a number of languages for translation, um, just a whole number of things. But, um, voting in general i- is just the most important thing that I think i- in the modern, the modern American political, you know, landscape that you can do. And I think that was evidenced in twenty twenty, right? When against all odds, we were pushing and pushing and pushing for a win that would change, uh, the political paradigm in the country. And to some degree, we got it. Are we there yet? Not entirely, right? We, we need more. We need people to get out, get out to vote. Uh, and we also need people to run for office, which is the other problem, getting people to run for office. Um, and removing the barriers for people to do that, uh, because it costs. It also comes with a, uh, a, a mental cost frankly. Um, i- i- I, running for state assembly earlier in twenty twenty-one, um, I, you know, was stressed as all holy hell. I mean, it, it's, it's a thing on top of full-time education, on top of my responsibilities on the school board, on top of work, you know, and making it, we just gotta make it easier, make everything easier and then we'll be able to get people out.
Right. Convenience is key.
Yeah.
I think it applies to almost every facet, uh, that most people have to deal with. Um, what do you think, I think I mentioned this, but what do you think about lowering the voting age? So at eighteen right now, I know some cities are piloting, you know, I think Oakland Votes is one. Uh, in Maryland, there are a couple of cities that are piloting, uh, sixteen-year-olds being able to vote. I believe in school board elections. I mean, my view, you're on the school board. If I was a student in San Leandro, I don't want to know exactly who's making my decisions. I want to know everything from my pencil to my textbook, why it's there, but that's just me. I want to ask you if, if that, if you would want that in, in your own city.
I would. I, I think nationally it should be sixteen, period. Um, I, 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 my argument has always been, um, on the surface level that so many sixteen-year-olds are taxpayers in and of themselves and that should automatically guarantee them the right to vote. But I think there's this misconception that sixteen-year-olds, seventeen, eighteen, right? Or anyone below sixteen, um, are ignorant, don't know what they're talking about. And I just, I, I think that's ridiculous. Cause I, look how engaged sixteen-year-olds and teenagers, the youth were in twenty twenty, in twenty eighteen and twenty sixteen, more than they ever have been. And let alone, I, I, I work with student board members, I, I, I work with students who are in political positions. Um, and I, I
You work with me, I mean, come on, son.
That's right, I work with you. And I can, I see the work that they're able to do. Um, and I also think of it as a learning opportunity. Uh, voting, getting civically engaged teaches you everything that you need to know about the world, honestly. Um, but I, I, I just, I think it's a no-brainer that we should be lowering, lowering the voting age. I remember Prop seventeen, um, just this last election cycle, I can't believe that it didn't pass.
Me neither, actually.
But there is that piece about accessibility in which a lot of people were confused by the language of the actual text. Um, you know, it, having seventeen-year-olds vote, um, i- in the general election, should they be, turn a certain age at a certain amount of time? Get rid of the nuances. Let, uh, let's just be clear about sixteen. And there you go, right? I, I, it's just interesting. And I think my last piece on that is, you know, it's a battle. It was a battle trying to get eighteen-year-olds to vote back in seventies.
Oh, yeah.
It, it was even a battle at twenty-one back in the nineteen hundreds, so.
A battle to get women to vote.
It was a battle to get women to vote. It was a battle to get African-American individuals to vote. It, it, it's
Still is, actually.
It's still, oh, it still is, of course. Still is for women too. It still is for so many groups that are disadvantaged from the systemic political, you know, uh, arena that we have. Um, and we've got a lot of work to do because I think there's this illusion of stability um, within the political system, within voting rights, uh, that everything is right, everything is fine, everything's peachy, and it's not. Right? And I, I think we need to get clear on that, um, that it's not and get to work, honestly. But it's hard when you have, you know, people in political leadership that just destroy things, that, that, that bring the conversation down. Then you have media that just turn it into a circus. So I think it's up to the people who are on the ground in the local communities to really get it done. So you and me, we're getting to work on it.
Yeah, yeah. Right after you get, you, you graduate, we'll get to work on it. That'll be my gift. Uh, no, no, that's all great. And, and I just want to close out. I asked of, of all my guests, is, is your advice? Obviously, you know, like you, like you've noted, you know, young people want to get involved. They're, they're, they're almost there. Some, yes, I would agree, a decent, you know, are minorities and they don't, they feel alienated, they feel a little bit exhausted with the current political climate. Um, and some, very, you know, there are, there's that group that, that, that are ignorant. But a majority are, are wanting to be at the table. Um, and, and I would just ask, what is your advice for them? You work with students, you know, you're, you're an educator, you're in the process of being educated. So you're at all the levels. And, and how should, how should, what would you recommend for, for the average student to do when we're talking voting and, and education policy?
There will always be someone who will say no. There will also always be someone who will say something degrading, right? You can't do it. Who are you? Who do you think you are? You don't know enough. Um, and I think the biggest piece of advice that I got entering politics that I always give now is just keep pushing. Just keep pushing in because you will get in there. Uh, it doesn't matter if you're running for office, doesn't matter if you're just trying to get yourself heard in public comment. Just push. And if, if all in doubt, you know that you're not alone because there are so many other people in this country that want to get engaged. So make those connections, network a- and, and really form a coalition so that you can advocate not only by yourself, but together with people. Um, I, I think that's the big thing. And it took me a while to learn that. I was always in a, for, you know, i- in my own world level, I'm gonna do this. But then that shift of becoming a high schooler to a student, to a school board member and to, you know, ultimately a director for a state association. and to, you know, ultimately a director for a state association, um, it, you just, you need to be with people. So, um, ign- ignoring the haters, um, eh, getting together with like-minded people uh, and really pushing forward what you're advocating for with them. Um, but also just keep going, keep going and and push in and be the best person that you can. But also, do it with kindness. Don't come in, you know, a- aggressive or for the wrong reasons. Come in there knowing that you are doing this for society. You're doing this to push the, you know, the world forward. Um, and not for your self-interest. But of course, we're humans. Sometimes people will do that. Um, but a- as long as it's centered to your purpose, to our collective purpose o- of pushing the world forward, then go for it, all in it.
Sound advice. Thank you for that. Um, I would have to agree with it. Uh, one, one thing that I always like, you don't know enough people to get this done. I I used to hear that a lot. Um, I still do. I'm still pushing though, you know. I I'm still pushing. You know who you are, audience members. No, I'm playing. Uh, no, but no, that was great. Thank you so much for the advice. Uh, now you're allowed to to shout out your your social medias and and promote yourself just a little bit. Uh, I will link it all in the description, uh, but now is your time.
Sure, um, at at I am James Aguilar for pretty much everything except for, um, on my Facebook page for some reason. But um, I I I, I think a lot of people, um, especially now, are craving to be heard, are craving to be listened to. Um, and so I I, that's why in the last, you know, couple of years, especially after running a special state assembly campaign, um, I I've been trying to amass a coalition of people who are running for public office, of people who are progressives, people who will listen to those, people who are just craving, you know, to be heard. Um, so I, there are a lot of people that I would say that you all, audience, should um, should look at running for assembly, running for state senate, running for Congress even. Uh, and I-
Even in your future.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'm focused on my job on the school board, but I definitely have plans for California and uh, some things I would love to push forward, uh, but it will come in time. Uh, I I I really love the work that I do on the school board, uh, because I love education. There's just nothing that makes me smile more, literally, and it sounds corny. Um, but being in the classroom with students, because I see them engaging a- and really excited with the material for the most part, like me in math, I was just dying in math, but there are some kids-
Still dying in math, actually.
I'm, I I'm in a political science stats class this semester, so I I'm dying now. Um, but I just see that students wanna be heard. Um, students want to get involved and they, they they wanna enjoy their experience in the classroom. And so, uh, for the foreseeable future, I I I hope to continue in this leadership role on the board. Um, and keep doing the work worth doing, because I I think we have a unique team on the board. Where all of our trustees, really, while we have our disagreements, we understand each other's perspectives. We respect each other and we work well together. So I I'm really fortunate to work with them and an amazing staff and superintendent. Um, so I I'm in no rush to move anywhere, uh, but someday in the future, for sure. Because there's a lot of work to do at the state, um, and eventually nationally, there's also a lot of work, so. Yeah, but that's me in a nutshell. Um, and I I I I like to talk about my background. I like to talk about voting a- and about education because it's all stuff that really is quintessential to-
It's intersectional.
People.
Yeah, it's intersectional, it's interconnected. It all, it all matters truly. Uh, so no, I I thank you for for the insight, for the, for the valuable perspective. Um, and I think not only will the, you know, your constituents and community members in San Leandro feel it, but I think throughout the state, you know, I think they'll have some problems to reckon with. You're just gonna be out there trailblazing it up. And and and, no, I I I thank you. Thank you so much. And I wish you the best with all your endeavors. Trust me. And you know, I'm always here. You know, one of those, of those young people that you talk about, yeah, right here. Uh, so so no, thank you, thank you so much, James. I do appreciate it.
No, thank you for having me on. This was really great.
Yeah, yeah, it was really great, wasn't it? Uh, cool. Yeah, no, that, thank you, man, and and take care of yourself. Stay safe. Still dealing with the the pandemic, um, and and happy to have you on again.
Thank you, yeah.
Take care, man.